Okay, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the August 3rd, 2017 meeting of the City of Bellingham Planning Commission. I'd like to ask everybody to silence electronic devices at this time. If you've got them, cell phones or laptops, if you're wearing a laptop, just make sure the volume's off. And with that, Heather, would you please call the roll?
Barrett O'Brien.
Here.
Phyllis McKee.
Here.
Holly Taiyi.
Here.
Lisa Anderson.
Here.
Mike Estes.
Here.
Steve Crooks.
Here.
Iris Madi-Gibson is experienced.
Thank you. So, we have one set of minutes we're going to approve before we move into the meeting, and those are minutes from the July 6th meeting that we had, and those were distributed to everybody, and so unless there's any comment on those, we'll just kind of do a head nod around if those are okay. So, all right, minutes are approved from July 6th. So, tonight's meeting is on the Wacom Community College Institutional Master Plan. Before we get into that, and it's a public hearing, which means there'll be a formal public comment period for that topic, but before we get into that, we always have a regular public comment period where anyone in the audience can talk about anything they want at the microphone for three minutes. So, if you would like to speak on the Institutional Master Plan, this is not the time to speak, but if you want to talk about anything else at all, share your thoughts with us on any topic, now's your chance. Just come on down and state your name and address. All right.
Um, I have something to pass out, but Heather's enough for everybody.
Sure, if you could, Heather, can you distribute this?
Where do I, uh?
Sorry, over here to the mic. Just make sure you put, state your name and address, and then tell us what you're thinking.
Uh, my name's Doug Gustafson. My address is 1441 St. Paul Street.
Thank you.
And, uh, do I have to start?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So, yeah, I am Technical Director of Homes Now. It's a new organization that me and Jim Peterson up there set up, and basically, we have the goal of ending homelessness in Wacom County. So, um, we've only been around for about two months. We've housed two people that were previously homeless. We built tiny homes, or mini homes. It costs about $3,500 per home. One thing to consider is that we are, we are not going to be asking the city or anybody for money. Money is not what we're interested in. We're interested in ending homelessness. So, basically, um, we saw that the city was willing to offer the, uh, the Lighthouse Mission a dollar, a dollar purchase on old buildings and a 75-year lease on the land to do that. So, what we were wanting to do is to actually, instead of, instead of putting that money toward like a religious organization that might help with homelessness, but also is building like a chapel and stuff like that, instead, we want to spend all of it on actually solving homelessness. So, basically, um, we were wondering if we could get some, some deal along those lines where there might be some land that the city has with boarded-up houses, or something that we could, we don't have to worry about the money. We can figure out how to fix the houses. We just need, we just basically would need support from the city in order to open that up for us, because obviously, the market value for land is very expensive, so. Another thing to consider is the amount of cost we're spending on homelessness every year, so, you know, $300,000 or $400,000 for the city to clean up homeless camps, to the tune of 15 per week, and I have sources in this so you can see it, uh, you know, that, that's a lot of money, and if you think about that each one of these houses costs $3,500, I mean, you could, you could literally house the people that are homeless and have them clean up their own homeless camps, and they won't be homeless anymore, instead of, instead of having the police bust up their camps, and then all their stuff is gone, and then, and then that increases crime, because you see more people on the streets, they have to, they, they steal to get their stuff back. And we're interested in reducing crime as well as reducing homelessness. You can see that the number of homeless people in Wacom County's gone up, keeps going up every year since 2012. Um, you know, there's, we're, the city, or the county's talking about building a big new jail. That's $110 million. It's expected to be anywhere from $400 million to 1.1 billion over 30 years to run that thing. And, uh, over the course of 30 years, and, you know, if you think about that level of cash, like what it could do if you, if we found alternatives to that. And, so, basically, we're, we're looking, we're looking to work with the city, we're looking to, um, to have land so that we, we don't have to even own it, you guys can own it, but we will ensure it. And, um, basically, we are wanting to end homelessness instead of just put a quick Band-Aid on it, or an emergency shelter on it, and so, uh, we're really looking for help. We, you know, we, you can contact us anytime. We're, um, some of the county council members, like Sat Paul and Todd Donovan, they said that, that they couldn't make this kind of deal, or that the city couldn't make this kind of deal, but we, but we see clearly from the Lighthouse Missions page that they did make that kind of deal, um, for the mission. So, we're looking for something much more modest to start out, but we already have two homes on Lummi, Lummi. We're working with Stepping Stones on the Lummi Nation, and, uh, you can check us out online and see the, see the model, see that it works, and, uh, we're hoping to expand, so, basically, looking for the city's cooperation with that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. And would encourage you to speak to council members and the planning department.
Of course.
Directly, and mayor's office.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Thank you. All right, is there anybody else who would like to make a comment? Oh, there you go.
I'm going to get three minutes. No, this is going to get sick.
My name's Jim Peterson, 5 Sunny Side Lane. Uh, I'm with Homes Now, I'm the president of Homes Now. I was homeless for 17 years. Been off the streets since 1991, and the way I got off the streets was somebody asked me what I wanted. They didn't tell me what I needed or what I wanted, they asked me, and it got me housed, and now I'm a father of three kids. Uh, they're all grown, married, and carried on. Uh, so, I've had this dream since 1994 to end homelessness across America, and I think it can be done in a year. You say, "That's crazy." It can't. Homelessness means without a home, that's it. You can add mental health, drug and alcohol, and all that into it, but homelessness means without a home. So, with Homes Now, we're surgically working on housing, that's all we're working on, and then we want another organization to step up and do support services like drug and alcohol and that. But we honestly believe that if you require somebody to go in treatment before you house them, you're throwing money away, because if you're not stable, if you don't have a stable place to live, and you go into a 28-day treatment program, and you come out and you're still homeless, you're going to go right back to what you know, because any 12-step program will tell you, change your playmates, your playgrounds, and your playthings. So, what I'm asking the city to do is consider helping us. We're not asking for money. We're asking for you to find me a lot, a quarter acre, that's all I'm asking for, to put four homes on for a year. Let us try it. If it works, help us more. But what do you have to lose by helping us? Give us one lot, and I know the city has a lot someplace, and it doesn't have to be in the ideal location, just give us a lot. We don't care if it's in a neighborhood. We do want it to be kind of close to a bus, bus area, but we have, I have five people right now I could house tonight if I had a lot. They have vehicles, so it doesn't have to be on a bus route. We can build the homes. We can build, we've already built two, and the reason we're working on Lummi land, everybody asks us why we started on Lummi land. I reach out, I reach out to citizens in the county, "Let us put one in your backyard, let's put one in your backyard." Nobody did. Lummi came to us and said, "Hey, we have this program, a rock-around program, that provides mental health, drug treatment, and all the support services on demand. We'll give you the land you build." We've been at it for a month, we've built two homes, we've housed actually four people with those two homes, because those homes opened up spots for a mother and her daughter who's pregnant, so we've housed four, four or five people within a month on $6,000.
About 30 seconds, Jim.
Okay. So, my thing is, you spent $300,000 last year cleaning up homeless camps, didn't house one person out of that $300,000. You threw a bunch of stuff away. If we had the $300,000, we could have housed 100 people permanently, you wouldn't have had to clean them up this year like you're going to have to do. So, we just ask you, we're, I'm meeting with County Planning Commission tomorrow, and I want to meet with the planning people here and actually work together. We're not out to do anything but solve homelessness, so thanks for your time.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else who would like to speak during the public comment period? Now's your chance. Okay, seeing no one, we will close the public comment period, and thank you both for speaking.
Yeah.
And we will move into our public hearing. Uh, and again, the public hearing tonight is on the Wacom Community College Institutional Master Plan, and before we get started, I want to offer opportunity for the planning commissioners to speak, because in a couple, you have comments. So, Lisa, do you want to speak?
So, for full disclosure, I am an employee at Wacom Community College. I'm a classified staff member. I'm not in a position in administration, nor am I involved in any decision or policymaking on a broad level, let alone the, um, the, the master plan. I did not participate in the development or comment area of it, but I wanted to disclose that just in case anybody on the commission or in the public, if they had a concern of a conflict of interest, I would, um, open that up so that if somebody did have a concern, they can speak forward for me to consider whether or not I should recuse myself. I do know on my end, I am able to take off one hat and wear another, so being on the commission, I have multiple roles, from living in neighborhoods to past board members, board participation, so I think I've always been able to just segment what, um, my other roles have been within the community and focus solely on doing a good job here, but wanted to give anybody an opportunity in case they had a concern to let me know.
Thank you, Lisa. Does anyone on the planning commission have a concern with Lisa's participation? I don't either, and I think being an employee in the institution doesn't qualify as a conflict. Thank you for disclosing that, and it's important. And Steve, you also had a similar comment.
Yes, I, uh, as a past president of the Cordada Neighborhood Association, I actively participated with Mr. Brian Keely and the Wacom County Board as this project enveloped a couple of years ago, and I did actively participate in the project. I think for that reason, this transparency, I should divulge that, and I am asking to be excused from this hearing because of that reason. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. And I think that is a different scenario and a more appropriate, uh, reason to be excused, and so, I, I, as the chair, I guess I'll excuse you unilaterally. Have a good night. Okay, so with that, we can proceed, and I think what we're going to hear is presentations from the Community College and staff, um, and then we'll take public testimony, and then we'll have a commission discussion. So, we will take testimony before we really get into anything detailed, but that'll occur after both presentations. So, with that, take it away. Brian?
Hi, my name is Brian Keely, and I am the Senior Director of Facilities and Operations for Wacom Community College. I am here tonight to represent the leadership of Wacom Community College and provide some information on our Institutional Master Plan. We, I would like to present some, some of the work that we've done over the past five years or so on the master plan, and I'm also joined by Keith Schreiber with Schreiber, Starling, and Whitehead, who was one of our lead planners for the consultant firm that we hired to help us with the plan. Just to give a quick overview of what we're hoping to cover, we're going to talk a little bit about the goals and purpose of the IMP, at least for the, for the college, what it means to us, the IMP process that we went through. We'll talk a little bit about the needs that were identified through the process that we went through with the IMP. We'll talk a little bit about the structure, supporting documents that go along with the IMP, a phased development plan that was created through the IMP, some of the similarities and differences between the current Cordada design standards, or development standards, and what we're proposing with our new IMP. And then we'll talk a little bit about allowable land uses with the IMP. So, our, our primary goal of the IMP was to support our college mission, our core themes, our strategic plan, and provide, um, a good framework for the planned physical development of Wacom Community College. The purpose is kind of threefold. One is to define and project future space and infrastructure needs by providing a framework for decision-making, and hopefully provide that framework to be flexible to accommodate future changes and growth on campus. Second was to support the biennial funding request in the state capital budget, and also give us a tool and a plan to use when we talk about other alternative financing, such as public-private partnership, or maybe borrowing money from the state treasury for capital, uh, projects. So, it's important to us in that way, in that it, it gives us a plan that we can submit along with our request to show that we do have kind of a, a good structure to our development on campus. And then the third, of course, is to meet the requirements of the City of Bellingham Municipal Code 2040, which, uh, in a nutshell, requires any institution with, that's over 50 acres to have a master plan. The process has been fun, exciting, interesting. We've learned a lot through the process, working with the city staff and our neighborhood and campus community, broader community. We initiated the, the master plan in the summer of 2012. That's when we hired Keith as a consultant, and we started doing some, some work on the plan. We wanted to make sure that the plan was connected to other guiding documents that we have in the, in, at the college, including the strategic plan. So, we kind of outlined, uh, a structure of workshops that, that we wanted to go through to make sure that we gained stakeholder, um, feedback and informa, gathered good information, but also kept it within the structure of our strategic plan and our mission and goals. We coordinated with the city early on, and throughout the process, we've had a great collaboration process with the city to learn a little bit more about the IMP and understand what our requirements were. And then we did several studies and added some different documentation to support the IMP, and ultimately put together some ideas and some needs that, that had developed through that process. This is a slide I just threw together to kind of show some of the key milestones of the IMP process, starting in 2012 and, uh, down to today, which is an exciting point of the process for us to be here in front of the commission. You can, you can see through this milestones list, there was a lot of collaboration with both the city, the neighborhood, the Cordada Business Park Association, the, you know, the, our Cordada Design Review Committee, and others. Some of the needs that were identified throughout the process, these are just a few, but generally, we need more classroom space. We need it now, and we're going to need it in the future to support the growth on campus, support our enrollment growth specifically. Computer labs were identified as a, a need, more and, and larger computer labs. Study and gathering spaces is something that we determined was very important. Early on in community and technical college development, those general common area spaces were kind of neglected. Most of the building effort and programming went into making sure every square foot was utilized for instruction, so we wanted to make sure, you know, there's a big shift now in the way instruction happens, and it's a much more collaborative process with the students. There's, there's a need for gathering spaces, um, and that is something we're really trying to include in future growth on campus. We have, uh, what we feel is, is a challenge on our campus, and that our north and south campuses are bisected by Kellogg Road, uh, which doesn't sound like a, a big issue in itself, but we do have concerns with pedestrian traffic crossing the road back and forth from north to south campus, which happens daily and at times at fairly heavy volumes. We worked on some ideas for a better pedestrian connection to WTA and the new, uh, WTA station that's on Cordada. One of the things that we identified was a need for student housing in the future, primarily to support our international program. A lot of those students come to us needing housing, and we've kind of tapped out the, um, host-family capacity of the, of the community here, and we're really looking for, as, as our program and international house, uh, program grows, we're looking for some housing for those students as well. And then conference-sized meeting spaces, smaller seminar spaces, and some other, other types of growth spaces, growth for specific programs on campus. I'm going to turn it over to Keith to talk a little bit about our anticipated growth and some of the development standards.
Keith? Um, thank you, Brian. So, as this slide indicates, one of the things that really starts to define the facility needs of the campus is what, what has been historically the growth pattern for students on campus, and what do we see as our projected growth over the next 40 years. We were looking at the U.S. Census Bureau mid-range product, projections, as you can see here, from starting in 2012 when we began to 2040, and we're looking at pretty much a, a fairly consistent 7% growth over that period of time. So, the total number of students needing to be accommodated in the space that you'll need is going to be, it's, it's in demand now, and it will continue to be in really tight demand, and, um, so we're looking at that as a FTE, by the way, as a full-time equivalent student, um, and we'll be looking at trying to maximize the available space that we currently have on campus, as well as looking at where those shortfalls are, and then what, uh, types of facilities are needed to accommodate those. For the internal part of the IMP, we developed the IMP in a number of sections that really talked, began giving an overview to all of the campus readers, in this case, looking at the review process, then, then really concentrating on what is the current land use, the projected land use, circulation on campus, both pedestrian, vehicular, bicycle, and the circulation and use by the neighbors as they, as they use the 50 acres or the, in this case, 70 acres. We've developed some phased development plans, which we'll share in a minute, looking also at how we can maximize and maintain open space, making sure that we use land, appropriate land use principles and patterns where we have like uses and spaces where students can move efficiently from one building to the other in the 10 to 15 minutes they have typically between classes. And lastly, we developed, as Brian mentioned, a number of studies specifically as it relates to traffic, parking, and stormwater on campus. We defined the IMP boundary, uh, and you can see in this diagram, the main portion of campus is Zone 1. There's a, a second zone, which is the land that's directly across Cordada. There's two, Zone 3 areas that are separated by 5. The areas that you see here that are dotted are related, um, areas that are not part of the IMP, but, uh, they are related to the campus in that they're currently owned by the College Foundation, and, um, while they're not included in our IMP boundary at this time, they do have an affiliation with the campus as we go forward. So, looking at those districts, and then, um, looking at what the underlying zoning of those districts are, and how they can assist us, and how we would plan for the expansion of spaces within those general types of, of, of zoned usage. I'll share with you now what's, what we identified as some of the projected, um, growth to the campus. You can see that, uh, near-term, I, I might say that the dates on here are, are really only targets that were developed in the 2012 timeframe. The reality of how, uh, capital projects are developed on Wacom Community College is that they're really dependent upon the ability of the state to fund those buildings, and so we are looking at in a, in a optimistic timeframe how the state might be able to address that 7% growth pattern, realizing, of course, that we, we won't build anything without funding from the state. So, um, please take those dates as being suggested and not, not specific to that. So, within the near-term, I think the most immediate element that we plan for the campus is the, um, the construction of a new library learning commons. This project is, um, actually been already designed, bid, and is currently on hold due to the inability of the state legislature to provide a capital budget for the upcoming biennium. So, that project is located directly to the east of Colson Hall in the north part of campus. One of the other elements that we see as potentially happening in the near-term is the development of Campus Zone 2 for that campus housing that Brian mentioned as a possibility. We also see a number of infrastructure projects possible within there in terms of the development of the pedestrian connection between the W, the Cordada Transit Center and the main campus, as well as remodeling within certain elements, our projects, uh, on, on the existing campus. A little bit more far-term, um, we see that there's a, a potentiality for increase of that classroom space, perhaps by developing an expansion of the existing Kelly Hall, which you see here identified as Project 9. We'll be also looking at potential renovation of Cascade Courts, and then sometime in the farther version of midterm, perhaps the expansion of the Professional Technical Building, which is part of that Zone 4, which is, um, owned by the, um, Foundation. And then in this, uh, long-term, at this point, uh, beyond the midterm, we see the main core of campus as being fairly well-developed, and in, in terms of keeping the open space available, the potential development locations on campus are the, some smaller development that could occur around the existing Foundation Building on the south portion of campus, and then perhaps a central conferencing facility to the north part of campus, and then some additional professional technical development that could occur along the north boundary. So, again, these projects are identified as possibilities that could address that 7% growth. None of them are, other than the library learning commons, are specific at this point, and they really provide just the structure, uh, in that framework that Brian mentioned for decision-making as we go forward. So, one of the things that you may notice is that there are a lot of similarities to the IMP, to the Corda, Cordada Development Guidelines. We worked really closely with the Business Park Development and Design Review Committee to try to look at what the current design standards are, and then to try to incorporate those to the maximum extent possible within our formal IMP submittal. We looked specifically as it relates to the building edges and gateways to campus, how we could address parking issues on campus, and then pedestrian paths, both internal to campus and on the perif, uh, periphery of campus, and what amenities are being provided for that pedestrian passageway, looking at how we'd address, um, landscape and open space, establishing requirements for primarily drought-tolerant native growth plants, and then also to see how the development could reinforce and meet the sustainability goals that are part and parcel of that, um, strategic plan that the, that the campus has adopted. So, the differences from the Development Guidelines are that are really falling into two primary areas. Under the, the current Development Guidelines within the Cordada, or within the campus area identified, there could be as much as almost 1.4 million gross square footage within the four zones that are identified. Under the new IMP, we're look, we're looking only to key that development up to 500,000 square foot prior to requiring an IMP amendment. That would exclude any of the residential, commercial, and mixed-use development in District 2, and I believe staff will talk a little bit more about what that means later. And one of the other differences between the current guidelines are the building heights. In the current, uh, Cordada Development Guidelines- In the current Cordada Development Guidelines, there's various levels of building heights that vary between 30 to 45, in some cases up to 100-foot in the eastern portion. So we see no way that we would need 100-foot of development for the college in our IMP. So basically, we've consisted that to having a building height limited to 60-foot at the perimeter of campus and where the bus ride of ways, and otherwise have that as a more consistent guideline throughout the entire campus. Within our institutional zoning, we would look at land uses really that fall into these broad categories of administrative support, student residential, student activities, open space, mixed-use facilities, the public utilities that need to serve those, perhaps wireless communication facilities, and other accessory uses to the primary academic spaces that are on campus.
So again, the college is very excited about where we are with the process, and we want to thank you for your time this evening in considering our IMP and hopefully a recommendation from the commission to adopt our IMP into the city comprehensive plan. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brian. Ken, and if we do have questions for you guys, we'll pose them after the process. But thank you.
Okay, thanks. So the city will give our presentation, and Chris Cook and I have been working together. Collaboration has kind of been the theme through this whole process, and he and I collaborated on the proposal or the packet you see tonight, and he's going to manage that portion and I'm going to give the verbal portion. So I'm Kim Wheel. I'm with the City Planning and Community Development Department, and I've been the project manager for this proposal. But I've had a lot of help from my colleagues with their expertise in all kinds of things, and many of them are here tonight. There's Greg Ockett, and Kathy Bell, and Chris Como, and Kate Newell, who did our wonderful maps that you see in the new documents, and of course, Chris Cook, and Rick Sepler, our director. And we also have enjoyed the collaboration with WACOM Community College. I think they kind of had to put up with us a bit for all the requests we had and some changes, but ultimately, I think sort of at the end, we kind of came together, and I think you'll see tonight that this proposal does meet our regulatory requirements. So you can go to the next slide. WACOM gave a really thorough review about the need and purpose of the institutional master plan, which I'll call the IMP, and about how it was developed. So I'm just going to add to that, kind of like a layer cake. I'll put the second layer on. And then you can provide the icing during your recommendation or whatever you decide to do, but we think that this presentation will show you how the IMP and the related components of adoption of an IMP meets our regulatory requirements. So this is the outline for tonight, and let's just get right into the proposal. Next slide. So IMP may not be real familiar to you because the last, the most recent one that was adopted was in 2006 for the St. Joe's Hospital IMP, and that was an update to the 1983 original IMP, which I think was our first IMP in the city. And then, so that was 2006. And then before that, the more recent one was 2001, when Western Washington University came forward with their IMP, and they've since come forward with some amendments. And we've used, we've gone to that document for some of the template for what you'll see tonight, where it's been real successfully used. And I think that you'll see with this third IMP that institutions important to our community have grown to a point where they are required through our code at 50 acres to get an IMP. But it's also really helpful comprehensive planning for them as an institution. And so I think you'll see that while an IMP is not necessarily familiar to you, it's really, you'll see hints of comprehensive planning and the document that you just reviewed here for us for the city's comp plan mingled throughout here. I'm going to point out a couple of things from that and that slide that maybe Chris can use the pointer to show that, the previous one, sorry. Where in the top-left corner, with the pink outlining the IMP boundary, you can see that the institutional area, the blue, is surrounded to the west with residential zoning, and then to the south and east with commercial, and just to the north there in Area 14 with We're going to be talking about two different neighborhood plans and some zoning changes coming up here, so, next slide. So again, the requirements are much like the comprehensive plan, similarly with, you know, updates to the comp plan appendix, to our zoning tables and our municipal code. What zoning changes have occurred. So this is a Meridian zoning map, and you can see probably the inset, the detail map is a little bit easier to look at, but Area 25, which is Zone Commercial now, part of the Meridian Commercial District, a portion of that, and that portion that's owned by the community college, is being rezoned to institutional and becoming Area 36. And that little node in there that says 21, that's the city's pump station, one of the pump stations, and that will just be incorporated into Area 21 to make it nice and tidy. So that's the zoning change in the Meridian Neighborhood Plan. In Cordada, there's a few changes. There's three small changes. The Area 15 in the southern portion, which are now Zone Commercial, and kind of to orient you, the little Cruz and Coffee, I think, or Coffee Stand is where that number 15 is, just to orient you where you are on the ground. The area north and south of that will be rezoned to institutional, so becoming part of Area 13. And then a little map error, a zoning boundary error, is being fixed. We, I think our JIS staff discovered that, and that's just an error from a past street vacation. So the 30 feet that has been mapped as Area 16 is actually owned by the college, and it will be corrected and be part of 13. Oh, and some other changes too, which I think you've recently seen, and we'll point these out on the map. We don't have the updated map. It'll be ready next week, so we will forward that to the city council. But in Area 20, there was a map, a zone change there from industrial to residential, so making it Area-
Residential to industrial.
Excuse me, yes, residential to industrial, thank you. And then in Area 11 on the west side, the Cordada Park area, was rezoned, the city portion owned by the city, was rezoned to public and is now Area 22. So those aren't represented here tonight. They're not finalized, but within the next week, they will be, and we'll forward those to the city council. So this figure is the first figure you see in the new BMC, and it shows the boundary, it shows the districts, which is the same template that Western uses, calling them districts. And you'll see, for example, that District 1 is kind of the central academic core, and 2, as Keith pointed out, is the future student housing, and then 3, just for similar academic uses. This new BMC is set up like the urban village BMCs, if you are into that sort of thing, in that there's new articles added each time a new urban village is added. Similarly, each time we add a new IMP, we'll add another article. So the purpose of the IMP from this, kind of the institutional chapter perspective is these things, in that you'll see, again, they're kind of like the comp plan. It is intended to define our boundaries and our limits, kind of like our city limits. It's meant to make sure that phased development is appropriate and doesn't have impacts on surrounding uses. We want it to be compatible with the physical features of the site, such as the wetlands to the north that you saw as the blue shapes on those maps previously, and other site features. And then they did look at utilities and streets to make sure that they're adequate for the growth that's projected. No docketting was required for this because it's the adoption of a new subarea plan. So however, it is a type 6 legislative process, like the comp plan update was, and your role is to review this proposal for consistency with the comp plan amendment criteria and the rezone decision criteria, and also to ensure that the Institutional Chapter 2040 elements and standards are in place. There's five elements, and I'm going to read those to you. The nine standards have been incorporated in the BMC, and I think that was explained in the staff report. But the elements include land use, circulation, utilities, phased development, and open space. So kind of similar to some of the elements in the comp plan. After this hearing, then you'll make a recommendation, obviously, and forward it to the city council. And again, we will have those updated maps. In addition, we have some added detail to add to the utility map, just to the existing infrastructure, so that'll be another update that we'll provide to the city council. If you haven't looked at WACOM Community College's website, I really encourage you to do it because they're celebrating their 50th anniversary, and the photos are just fantastic. And you might recognize some things from back then if you were here in 1967, but in 1987 is when they started the campus where it currently is, with six-acre donation from Trillium, I think, and it's grown to 73 acres. They did submit an earlier version, excuse me, an earlier version of this IMP was approved by the president and the board of trustees. That was, I think, a 2013 version. And then they, as I understand, have approved the 2016 version, which is what this application started with. So they have approval from the college so far. As Keith and Brian both talked about the community input and the college needs, they conducted studies. One study that's not up there is a wetland study, and that's what those wetlands were mapped in a wetland delineation that was done recently. The IMP implementation is going to be very similar to Western Washington University's. It's predictable, it's consistent, and it's worked. And it's like two paths, either a new development proposal, I can't use the learning commons because it's already happened, but the next proposal will either go through a site plan approval, which is the actual terminology used in the BMC, or a building permit. So a site plan approval is a little bit like a planned development permit, and that's just for the significant projects. This was spelled out in the staff report. Significant projects, there's not very many of them, that they would include projects within 100-feet of a residential zone, so some of the areas to the south and west that we noted in the zoning, and are not exempt from SEPA, and then anything in District 2, which is that area where student housing is proposed. So any of those would be a significant project and would go through that site plan approval. Otherwise, it's simply a building permit approval. And then we would make sure that it's consistent with IMP and the new BMC, and Cordada would still have a role in reviewing, the design review committee would still review the proposal and make sure it's consistent with their private covenants. It was important to preserve what's worked in Cordada. I think everyone kind of sees and feels the theme there, and one of those things that's worked really well is the landscaping requirements. So while there are new development and design standards, they're very compatible and reflect what the Cordada Design Guidelines have been, or are still. As Keith pointed out, the height limit is going to be flexible, except for those areas that are abutting residential. They'll be limited to 60 feet. Future studies on traffic or significant projects, such as maybe student housing, may be required in the future. And I wanted to point out that one of the elements we mentioned earlier, the circulation element, they, in this IMP, we set it up, just like Western's, where they identified circulation issues and possible solutions. Because every campus, both campuses are surrounded by residential uses and others, so there's usually traffic issues. And it was really, I think, clever how they set it up with identifying them not necessarily as problems, but issues with possible solutions. One of those issues is this opportunity to make a connection between West Kellogg Road and Short Street. Do you want to show them on that? Yeah. This is something that both the Cordada Neighborhood Plan and the Meridian Neighborhood Plan have identified in their goals and policies to make this nice connection. So it would be just on the eastern boundary of the IMP, that area that's just being rezoned to institutional. And right now, there is no, there's no connection. Further, further support the Meridian Commercial District, which is this area in red. That's not the whole neighborhood, it's just what has been identified in the neighborhood plan as the commercial district. A few other details about the IMP. We took, both the college and city took this proposal to the Cordada Review, Design Review Committee, and presented it in March, and they are supportive of the approach whereby their role shifts to more advisory and implementing their private covenants. And another detail, as Keith mentioned, is the foundation properties are not being rezoned at this time, but you saw them sort of outlined as future growth potential. In our analysis, we determined that all the requirements have been met. That's our job to bring forward to you, to show that and document that all of the standards and elements are in place and all the review criteria have been met, including text amendments that have been done in according to BMC 2022, and the environmental review, the SEPA environmental review resulted in a determination of non-significance. So in the staff report and in any comp plan amendment, you'll review the comp plan goals and policies that are appropriate. And this one is just an example that we use. We pulled one from that staff report because it took a little different angle on the role of WACOM Community College and other institutions with regard to jobs. They employ a lot of people and they prepare a lot of people for employment. So we wanted to kind of highlight that policy. Over 600 notices were mailed to the surrounding neighborhood, and to the date of the packet preparation, there were no public comments, and as far as I know, we have one comment. I think that you received that from Mr. Ralph Wenning. And if I could summarize it, he says he supports the new role of the PUD as advisory, and he acknowledges issues on Kellogg, traffic issues on Kellogg, and other traffic issues will likely be dealt with in the future. So the final slide of asking for your approval, we recommend that the IMPs are approved, along with the rezones and the amendments to the comp plan and the BMC.
Thank you, Kim, Chris. With that, we will conclude the presentation portion of the meeting, and we'll provide an opportunity for public testimony on the topic. And then when that's done, I think commissioners will have a chance to pose some questions to everybody down there. So this is a public hearing, which means we will have public comment. If you want to comment on this topic, it's much like the comments you heard previously in the open public comment period. You need to come down to the mic, state your name and address, and you've got right around three minutes to share your thoughts with us, post questions, whatever you'd like to say. So we did have two people, actually, well, we had two people sign up, and now I'm looking at the names, and they signed up on the signup sheet, but it's Doug and Jim who spoke to us in the open public comment period. So there's nobody else signed up. That doesn't mean you can't speak if you didn't sign up. So it looks like there's at least one person. If you'd like to come down, yeah, come share your thoughts. And then if anybody else would like to speak after that, then please, of course, feel free to come down. You're done.
My name is Catherine Higgs, and I live at 1516 Darby Estates, 309. I read your notice, I read your presentation. I came largely because I wanted to understand fully what the impact might be on Block 18 on your maps, which is Darby Estates. I drove around the neighborhood, I'm new to Bellingham, looked at the industrial sections. I feel quite reassured that the major impact is not going to be that my brand-new condo is going to disappear under my feet in the next 20 years, but traffic strikes me will be a major impact. So I suppose to be more direct about it, I'd like to ask two questions. One, will any of this IMP intrude upon residential housing in the area? And two, what do you anticipate will be the impact on traffic in the area to the best of your ability at this point? Thank you.
Thank you. And what we'll do is at the end of the comment period, if there's another speaker, we'll give staff an opportunity to respond to the- give staff an opportunity to respond to those questions. Is there anyone else who'd like to comment? Sir, come on down.
My name's Kurt Thor, address 233 Middlefield Road. We own a commercial property right adjacent to the number two part, where you're going to have the housing. It's the Blossom Commons Development. And a little concerned not knowing how the Short Street that you spoke about, and how the traffic flow will be, and how that'll work into the entry into our property, which is already, is kind of tough. So, I'd like to know more about that. Other than that, we're excited to have that site developed.
Thank you. Thank you, Kurt. Okay, is there anybody else who'd like to comment? That's your chance. Okay. Seeing no one, we will close the public comment portion of the public hearing. And before we get into any questions, I'd like to give staff an opportunity maybe to respond to, there was three questions posed by the public regarding impacts to residential, existing residential housing, traffic considerations, and then, I guess Kurt's question is also regarding traffic, but more specific to that Short Street connection. So, is, can you guys take a minute to respond to that?
Short Street?
Sure.
Yeah.
So, basically, this establishes the institutional boundaries, and there is, at this point in time, no expectation of expanding into the adjacent residential zones. This is anticipated to be a 20 to 25-year plan, and it identifies two expansion areas. And Kim will go to those.
Oh, yeah, I can do that, yeah.
So, right now, it identifies expansion areas. It doesn't identify any additional expansion areas outside of that. It doesn't anticipate needing additional land outside this area.
Yeah, if I could comment a little further on that.
State your name when you guys speak, just in the mic picks it up.
I'm Brian Keely with Waukam Community College. If I could speak a little bit further on that. With the development, phase development, we're showing, we have, we feel we have ample space to develop out, as Chris mentioned, 25 years plus. We have a couple of properties that are owned by the foundation that could be future expansion, already partially developed. And we would have no desire or reason to develop into the residential areas surrounding the campus. If property somewhere in that area became available in terms of undeveloped property that we found advantageous to the college, we may look at that, but we have no plan of that at this point.
Okay, thank you. Chris, do you want to speak to the traffic questions?
I would just add one more, that if the university were to do any expansion and acquire adjacent property, it would go through the annual comp plan amendment process. Once this institutional plan is adopted as a, the one-time adoption allowed by the state, after that, amending it will require a comp plan amendment.
A docketed item?
A docketed item. So, there will be public notice, ample public notice, and all of that take place.
Okay, thank you.
I'm actually going to have Chris Como answer the question on circulation.
Great.
And he is here from Public Works.
Chris, good evening, everybody. Chris Como, transportation planner. So, I'm going to try to answer all three comments and questions at the same time. Generally speaking, there's going to be more traffic in this part of our city. This is one of the fastest-growing parts of our city. While we do not expect traffic from the college, generated from the college, to specifically go onto residential streets, the arterials that serve these areas are definitely going to become more congested over time. The interesting thing about the community colleges, they have a transit station right across the street. And over time, as the college develops, we're hopeful that they will take great advantage of that, and a lot of the students will choose to arrive by bus, and maybe less emphasis on automobiles and parking and things like that. In relation to the question about how the connection between Short Street and Kellogg would work, there's specific language in the IMP document talking about when that's developed, another traffic study having to be done to specifically examine how that street would connect to Kellogg, and at what point would there need to be something done for traffic control, such as either turn restrictions or a traffic signal? Because that section of Kellogg Road already carries about 14,000 to 15,000 vehicles a day. So, that's already in there, and it's been addressed, and that's a future connection that we'll have to take a look at. What was the other question?
Just a roundabout.
I think that was it.
Oh, the city actually has quite a lot of infrastructure planned and funded in the Cordada neighborhood. I could show you that if you are truly interested. I've got a document loaded up on the X drive. But we're building a roundabout at the northern hub to the university next summer at Cordada and Stewart. We're connecting West Horton Road just north. We're working on Aldrich Road. We've got a whole bunch of other things planned in this part of the city that hopefully will help. But as the city grows, there is going to be more vehicle traffic just generally, especially during the busiest times of day.
Thanks, Chris. Just to clarify, you're saying that when they, if the college were to propose making that connection, Kellogg to Short, it wouldn't require a plan amendment, but it would require, it's an independent traffic study?
What we would be looking at specifically is what kind of intersection control would be required at Kellogg? Because right now, there's a turn pocket, but if you're going to add a fourth leg to that, you're creating a new intersection there, and it's already a major entrance there on the north. And so, on the south, we'd have to take a look at the traffic coming off of there and wanting to turn in there. And if it was not safe to do so, we would have to turn restrict, left turn south into that property coming across the travel lanes, or we would have to signalize that as an intersection. Either one could potentially work, but we don't know what the answer is right now.
Gotcha. That would come with future study.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any follow-up questions on that in particular? All right. Thanks, Chris.
Yep.
So, with that, let's move into discussion. Is there anybody who has a question they would like to pose to either the college or Phyllis?
I was just going to say, it looks like it's been very well thought out.
Yeah.
So, details, thank you very much.
Garrett? Thank you, Phyllis.
I just had a question about the PUD and their role as an advisor, advisory role in this process. Was there any discussion of, you know, is there any possibility of not going to the PUD through a significant project? And what was the thinking we having them as an advisory role after it seems like this pretty much addresses, you know, the PUD requirements?
Okay. Do you want to have Kathy answer? Yeah, I'm going to ask Kathy Bell. We call her our Cordada expert. Whether she likes it or not. Thank you.
On my business card. Thank you, Kathy Bell. So, just to give a real brief history, Cordada consisted of 600 and some odd acres, and we annexed it in two stages. And one of the conditions of the annexation agreement was that we would honor the Cordada Business Park Planned Unit Development. And along with that comes a master plan, development and design guidelines in which part that Brian and Keith talked about. And the most interesting part of it is it also included private covenants. The private covenants are what establish the rules and regulations by which the Cordada Design Review Committee shall review all projects. Currently, that is part of our land use decision process. And so, what we are requesting with the IMP and drawing out the most critical components of the design and development standards to maintain consistency, because there's a lot of consistency out in the development of the Cordada PUD, is that we no longer need to rely on the Cordada Design Review Committee for any component of our land use decision process. However, because it's still part of the private covenants, as a land owner within, they will still be subject to review and approval by the Cordada Design Review Committee. So, advisory maybe isn't such the proper term as much as they will still be obligated through their private covenants until such time that they're amended, to get approval by the Cordada Design Review Committee. And we are recommending, and the Design Review Committee so agreed, that land use decisions no longer need to be part of their role in, within the IMP boundaries.
And that that was agreed to?
Yes. Yes.
How often does that committee meet? I mean, how much time does that add to the process of putting a project?
Actually, it doesn't add any time to our process. It's actually a much shorter land use process. In this particular case, if it is not a significant project, it'll be similar, if not identical to the process that all projects go through Cordada right now. We, being a member on the committee, we had standing meetings every third Thursday in the afternoon of the month, and we were meeting every month with one or more projects. Now, there's probably about a handful of projects left in Cordada to develop. Lately, the community college has been our most frequent flyer, because they've done the most development with ASB building, with the redo of the gym, and then the Learning Commons. So, it is a very infrequent process at this time. Used to be, not anymore.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mike, do you have a comment?
Sure. On the transportation side, there's a lot of talk of the desire to either close Kellogg or limit to transit only, and there's, I wasn't sure exactly what the decision-making framework was in terms of when and if that could happen, and what would dictate when it, if it could.
Chris Como again. So, the college has a desire to improve pedestrian crossing safety on Kellogg, as do we. But Kellogg Road is an arterial street between Cordada and June Road. Carries about 6,000 vehicles a day at present. That's going to get busier, just like all the other arterial streets. And it makes it very difficult to try to mix pedestrians and vehicles along with transit. We've looked at a number of different ideas. The college, at this point, I believe, is working with city staff to develop enhancements to the existing crosswalks out there, including rectangular rapid flashing beacons, which is a user-activated system to help people cross, basically warns drivers to stop and let the people pass. But the sheer number of students that are passing across Kellogg Road makes it kind of problematic. It makes it problematic for transit as well. Closing Kellogg Road would be a major change in our circulation system. Not only that, but in order for transit to still function there, we would have to figure out how to do that, because you've got a roundabout on the east side. And we'd have to figure out how that could be managed to not allow vehicles to pass through there while it did allow transit buses to pass through there. So, there's a number of things that need to be looked at. In the IMP document, there's specific language about the college needing to do further traffic studies before that's ever going to happen. Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Chris? Any else? I had a question about, I just thought of while you were presenting, and Kim, you mentioned that the college had conducted a wetland delineation, and that's kind of how we got some of these, obviously, these images are really like high-level. But it made me think about the length of the plan and how that corresponds to changes in the environment. And I'm wondering if, like, what happens if an area that's currently planned for development that maybe was not delineated as a wetland, but like, isn't planned for development until the long-term period? And then there's like changed conditions when it's time to build it out? Does this, is this like what we did down at the waterfront, where there's like some form of like longer-term vesting associated with this thing, with the SEPA or the fact that it's an IMP?
Well, that's a good question. It's not, the wetlands probably won't change a lot, but the regulations might. So, you're right. The buffers tend to, regulatory changes usually end up in buffers that are larger, so it could affect their phase development, but, and there's no vesting.
Yeah, so, it'd be like any other wetland delineation.
Exactly.
Five years they're good for.
And they've been really mindful of that. They've got open space requirements and desires, and they've really planned around that. Case in point is the Learning Commons right now, what they're doing, and you could see even their far-term development. I mean, we haven't analyzed that, but they aren't vested, they will be subject to the regulations in effect at the time.
And that's true of all of the regulations?
Right.
It's not like a planned action ordinance type deal where we get long-term vesting? Okay.
Can I add one thing?
Yeah.
To answer Garrett's question, and I failed to say it earlier, but one thing that we will be doing once this is approved, is we'll be going back to Cordada to amend those documents to make them compatible with these new changes. So, and that's happened before with other rezones that have happened in Cordada. One of the development projects right now is rezoned, Parkview was rezoned. So, with Kathy's guidance, we'll go back and do that so that there, so there's no inconsistencies.
Thank you. I had one other question for the college. I was looking at the plan, and I noticed that the large grass playfield like west of Orca Field is just shown as open space or recreation area. And if you, did, I'm just curious, was there a consideration for future, like, sports field improvement in that area or anything? Or is that seen as maybe just good as is, as big lawn?
Brian Keely with Waukam Community College. That area has been discussed as potential for baseball field or something of that nature. The college currently doesn't have softball or baseball as sports. And, you know, it gets so much use from both our soccer teams and the community as a, more of a practice field, that we felt it was important to retain that as open space and not develop it. So, that's why it's shown in our IMP as open space. We're required to have a certain percentage of open space on campus, and that made sense to retain that. Even though, I mean, I think I understand your question, that appears to be a fairly good location for development. We feel it's valuable as it is.
Thank you. That makes sense. I mean, particularly when you look at, there's going to be a big building in that other green field you've got. So, that's going to go away.
Adding a little bit to that, this is Keith Freiber. One of the things that we did look at in terms of the land use component was the proximity of the academic functions that are primary and core to the campus. And that site really does not lend itself to really close adjacency, either to primary academic or secondary academic or academic support. So, it was really being, recognizing its best use as it exists, and then committing to maintain that within this timeframe.
Thank you. I didn't have any other questions. Somebody? Garrett?
I just had a general question, not so much related to the institutional plan, but just parking up at the campus, is there adequate parking up there right now? Is it high demand or?
Again, this is Keith Freiber. One of the parts of our IMP was a traffic, or not, part of the traffic was parking count, parking use analysis. One of the things that we looked at was whether or not the current campus has adequate parking for its existing functions, as well as the projected functions. And then, one thing we did identify with that study is that there's a lot of parking available on campus. Whether it's defined as desirable by students or faculty is another question altogether. Usually, even in the, and we looked at parking in the peak period, which is always the fall semester or a quarter, and there was still parking available throughout campus, actually a considerable amount of parking available. It just wasn't close. And so, we're, as projects get developed, we'll always be looking at how that impacts in the future, but also a way to make that more, not more attractive, but more usable within that area.
Thank you.
If I could just add to that, Brian Keely, when we talk about parking, Keith mentioned it may not be as convenient. Most of the parking that we have available, even in our busy times, is in the north lot there that you see. there, that you see toward the top of that image, which is also the side of the street where our future development, most of it, much of it is planned. So, I think that makes, you know, that makes sense, that that will become utilized as we develop campus further. The other thing that Chris Como mentioned was, you know, trying to establish a better program for transit. And, one of the things we've done recently is we've added a bus pass to every student's ID card. So, all students with Watcom can ride the bus with their student ID. So, that's, we feel like that's making an impact too on our parking, you know, helping out with that. Thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, one more.
Yeah.
With the two properties that are owned by the foundation that are not included in the IMP or in the institutional areas, is there a strategic advantage for that, the more flexibility for what they want to do with those uses now? Is that the intention there?
That's a good question.
Brian Keely. Yeah, we actually taught, met with our foundation several times through this IMP process. And, at one point, we were going to, we discussed potentially rezoning those properties to institutional with their approval. And, they determined at that time that they felt like retaining the current zoning made more sense to them in terms of flexibility for them and potential uses. So, currently, that is where it stands. In the future, that may change, and that would need to go through an amendment process, obviously, to add those to our IMP boundary.
Thanks. Lisa?
Mine's just more of a general. I enjoyed reading this. I have a little bit of insight. And, so often, when I was looking through this, I was trying to think, for someone who didn't have institutional knowledge, what kind of questions would come up? And then, as you read through, a lot of those questions were answered, but little things like, that's more relatively new, like the bus passes. Knowing that, I'm glad you shared that, because when you do think of parking, when there's the image that eventually there could be a conference building, and it would take out part of the parking, knowing too that there's not a, there's no parking fees currently, so parking is free for faculty and staff, unlike other educational institutions. So, there's, knowing some of that, I know that there's steps that could be implemented to encourage bus ridership versus parking in the future if there's more of a squeeze and parking does become an issue. So, I think there's some tools that may not be necessarily identified in here when people in the neighborhood might be concerned about parking, but I think there's some things that Watcom would be able to employ in the future. Hopefully, not too soon, but I like my free parking. But, anyway, just knowing some of that information, I think, would be useful for the public to know, especially people who reside in that area. But, really happy to see this, and it makes a lot of sense to move it over to a plan, so happy to see it come through. And, it was very well written by all people who were involved, so good job.
Thank you. Well, if there's no more discussion, I think we need a motion. Would anybody like to offer a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to adopt the Watcom Community College Institutional Master Plan, including the Comprehensive Plan Amendments and the Bellingham Municipal Code Amendments and rezones necessary.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. The motion was to recommend approval to adopt the Institutional Master Plan. And, I'm going to forget what you said exactly, but I think all of the Comp Plan and amendments associated with it. Heather's got that. So, is there any discussion regarding that motion? Well, I would say, I would echo Lisa's comments. I thought it was actually really interesting to read, because we don't see this very often. And so, it was kind of a cool learning experience, and it did seem to capture everything. This is just my opinion. I do think it's consistent with the criteria that you referenced, Kim. The rezon criteria, the Conference of Plan Amendment criteria, and the Institutional Master Plan elements and standards. And, I think it's consistent with the Conference of Plan generally, our goals and policies. So, I'm supportive of the motion. Is there any other comment?
I was just, when I started reading it, I was curious about housing options, and I was really glad to see that section of the potential housing in the future in the District Two area.
That's a good point. I can't, I can't believe nobody caught that earlier, but I also thought about that. And, I think it's great to have that incorporated and planned for, and it's a, it's a good thing for our housing crisis in general, just to, just one more method to kind of deal with that. So, it's a good point. All right. If there's no other, oh, we have a comment?
With your motion, can you include that the maps will be updated to reflect the rezones to Areas 21 and, what was that, Area 9?
11.
Or Area 11? And so, we will provide updated maps to City Council that will reflect those new boundaries. And, also that the utility map in here will be further refined and updated. And, that's not really a substant, substantive change, it's just reflecting what the actual utilities are and capacities are in that area.
Yeah, we can do that. Do we, do we need to do that? I think we might, we might be able to, just for like the purposes of clarity of the motion, I think, I think if we, if everyone's okay with that, it can just be assumed, unless there's comment against that, and here we're on the record speaking about it, that the maps, Area 21 and 11 and any other, frankly, any other relevant maps in the document would be updated to reflect current conditions at the time of adoption.
Yeah.
So, do you guys feel comfortable with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you, though, for pointing that out. So, with that, I think we should have a vote. And, the motion restated is to recommend adoption of the Institutional Master Plan, Conference of Plan Amendments, Rezone.
BMC.
And, Bellingham Municipal Code changes, as reflected in the staff report presented today and the document attached. Let's have a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, motion passes, 5-0. And, thank you, guys, college, staff. I know, five years in the making, a lot of work, I'm sure. Maybe anticlimactic, but I'm, I think we're all, I think we're all pretty excited to see the implementation. So, thank you. And so, with that, we'll close the public hearing. We don't have any discussion of business unless anybody here wants to bring anything up. Greg, is there anything you want to talk to us about particularly? Okay, so, nothing, nothing old or new. We do have a meeting scheduled on August 17th. Anyone listening on TV, it's going to be an exciting one. It's a work session on short-term rentals, also known as Airbnb, VRBO, things like that. So, it will be a work session, not a public hearing. I've been told by the Planning Department, we're nowhere near a public hearing on this topic. This is just an opportunity for the city to introduce it to the Planning Commission. Will be in a work session format like we were before down below. And, it should be really interesting to see what you guys have to present. So, look forward to that. Thanks, everybody, and we will adjourn.